I'd like to call to order this regular Park District Board meeting for the month of December. First item on the agenda is a question of remote attendance, and I don't believe, in fact, I'm sure there's nobody available to attend remotely. So we're on to accepting the agenda unless there are proposed modifications.
A move that we accept agenda as presented.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any comment or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that carries unanimously. That brings us to public comment. And is there anyone here from the public wishing to address the board? Seeing no indication of that, then we can move on to Park District Staff introductions.
We do have some.
So I have with us tonight our new Outreach and Wellness Coordinator, Ashley Dennis. And she joins us, having been on staff with us actually for a little over a year as a part-time fitness instructor, and took the leap to becoming a full-time employee just about a month ago. So I'm going to let Ashley tell you a little bit about herself.
Thank you, Elsie. Well, yes, my name's Ashley Dennis. I am from South Carolina. I have an exercise science degree from the University of South Carolina. And most of my working career has been in the health field, which kind of really showed me how much I love talking to individuals about wellness and health and what that means to them. And then, from there, I was an exercise instructor in South Carolina at a gym and an office manager. And yeah, so I'm in Illinois now, and my husband's at the U of I getting his PhD in organic chemistry. And yeah, I love it. It kind of is a combination of all my passions. In South Carolina, I was involved in a lot of volunteer opportunities, including Feed the Community, which was an annual event where we fed over 10,000 people. And I was able, over the years, to see multiple aspects of that, from making the cornbread to actually going out and delivering the meals to these underserved populations. And that was a really cool thing that I was involved in. And then also, the Tiger River Foundation, which was, you know, an organization with the local river that was just in order to restore it and kind of create community awareness about what activities we offered there. So yeah, kind of a combination of my passions here. And over the last month, I've truly loved every day of being here. So, thank you.
What were some takeaways from doing some of the volunteer projects? What did you take away from doing those projects?
Um, I guess I learned a lot of organizational things with them. We started very small with Feed the Community, and then we got several churches involved. Then we got, I guess, just the writing things down, taking notes each year and learning things, and then growing, obviously. I just, yeah, I guess that's the biggest takeaway, is just kind of learning how an organization like that would operate or program like that. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us along then to the Urbana Park District Advisory Committee report. Is there anything other than the written report tonight?
No. Melissa couldn't be here.
Anything to add to that report?
I wasn't there. But I've heard good things about it. I ran into Melissa at the store the other day, and she was astounded at the reach of the library's efforts in Urbana, and thought it was a great thing to have it presented to OPDAC, because I think even if you're a regular library user, you maybe not don't know that you could borrow a swing machine or a guitar and all these other things.
That was new to me.
Yes. So, yeah, it was a terrific meeting from everything. I understand. And there's no meeting in December.
Okay. So that then brings us to our consent agenda. And on the consent agenda this evening are the approval of the two meetings in November, the November 6 study session and the November 13 regular board meeting, the receipt of our three monthly reports from the various departments, approval of the monthly paid accounts payable, action to accept the philanthropy report and gifts listed with gratitude, and action on ordinance 2018-15 authorizing the disposal or sale of personal property of the district. And lastly, action on resolution 2018-17, accepting revisions to the Urbana Park District Safety Manual. Under our rules, it is the purview of any single commissioner to remove any or all these items from the consent agenda for separate action. Is there any desire to do that? Hearing none, then is there somebody willing to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda in an omnibus fashion?
I move.
Whoa, that was good.
I move to approve all of the action items on the consent agenda and accept all the information items listed on the consent agenda in an omnibus manner.
Second.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded, and under the consent agenda rules, there's to be no further discussion at this point. So we'll do a roll call, starting at the left with LaShonda.
Aye.
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 And that passes unanimously. That takes us on to the financial reports.
Great. I'll be presenting to you the results from November 2018. The first report that I'll review is the fund balance report. This is the first of two budget reports. This report shows the receipts and expenditures for the prior 12-month period, the budget for the current period, and the preliminary unaudited results for the seven months ending November 30. The first page of this report, we call sum one, and this is all funds except for the Capital Improvements Fund. Revenues for this period were $8,321,000. $6,531,000 of the total revenues were from property taxes. The final property tax disbursement was received the first week of December this year, so the treasurer, who was leaving office, wrapped up the final distribution. The last week he had an office, and then the effective date of the deposit was December 1st or 2nd. So you'll see that on next month's report. So at this point in time, we've received 95% of our property tax distributions for levy year 2017. Expenditures were $5,037,000, and we have a surplus after seven months, which means that there was an excess of revenues over expenditures paid of $3,284,000. And net change in fund balance shows an increase in fund balance after seven months The next page, page two, is just the Capital Improvements Fund. And you can see that the Capital Improvements Fund had revenues for this period of $92,000 and expenditures of $645,000. Expenditures exceed revenues, which means there was a deficit of $553,000. Transfers in from the English Fund brings the total of other sources to $230,000, which leaves a net decrease in fund balance in the Capital Improvements Fund of $323,000. And as you know from last month's meeting, we received $738,065 in bond proceeds on December 5th. So you'll also see that next month, that the fund balance will flip-flop here for a while, and instead of a deficit, there'll be an increase in fund balance as we continue to spend it on the new projects that will be funded by those bonds. And finally, sum three is the first two pages added together. And I'd just like to note that the total ending fund balance at the end of November for the whole district is $9,843,000. Following are the pages for the other main working funds for the district, general, recreation, museum, and indoor pool. And with that, if you don't have any questions about the fund balance report, I'll move on to the Budget Analysis with History report. This report shows a historical comparison of the same seven months of the current year and the prior three years. Seven months of the fiscal year is about 58%, which is a number you can compare to throughout the report. The first section of the report is all funds district-wide. And if you move to, you can see all our property taxes here on the first page are around 95%. And if you switch to page two, in the middle of the page, total revenues and transfers in for this period were $10,48,000. You can see, if you look across the expenditure items, you can see that they're all tracking pretty ratably. I mentioned last month contractual services is a lot higher dollar amount than the prior three years, but that's primarily due to the pool PAC unit. So we're tracking for the budget, though. You can see the percentages are all tracking ratably in that realm as well. And if you move on to page three, again, fairly consistent here, nothing's really an outlier out of the ordinary as far as any of our other expenditure items. And total expenditures and transfers out for this period were $7,317,000, with a surplus at the end of November of $2,731,000. And I wanted to point out the, is this the best place to look at that? If you go to page one, back at the very beginning, I just wanted to point out that this is, November is the time of year when we get ready to make our bond payments on the two large alternate revenue source bonds. And we do some various transfers to fund that, because the property tax increases that the voters approved primarily were in the Recreation and Museum Fund, where we had growth in our rate. And so we transfer the, we do a large transfer from the Recreation and Museum Fund into the General Fund in November. And then the first week of December, before the bond payments are due, we do a transfer from the General Fund to the Bond Fund to make the payments. So the first half of that was done in November. So you'll see the $920,000 from the Recreation Fund, and then the $390,000 from the Museum Fund. Both of those transfers were completed. So, and then, I'm not sure if the one for the Bond Fund has its own line item. Transfer from General Fund is where you'll see the rest. So that one right now only has $25,000, which is our regular budgeted transfer to the land acquisition fund, so that portion was completed. But the portion from General that goes to the Bond Fund will be done the first week of December. So I'll talk about that again next month. So I'll move on now to the Treasurers Report. The Treasurers Report is the amount of cash that the district has on one day, November 30, 2018. All 24 funds are listed with where the cash is invested, for a grand total in November Page two, the first section, lists amounts that we have in interest-bearing accounts. Of the $11,485,000 total dollars on hand, $8,437 is out in investments. And that number, the amount out in investments, is also a fairly large decrease from what you would have seen in October, and that's also due to the bond payments, because we moved them out of our Chase Savings Account and into our operating account to make the payment. So Dick actually comes to our office and transfers those funds over to the operating account, so they're not in an interest-bearing account any longer, which is why they're not on this list. And so that was at the end of November. That way, we're all ready to roll when we need to make the bond payments the first week of December. So the next section on page two lists interfund loans. There weren't any interfund loans other than the usual general payroll and interim's loans for the month of November. And finally, on page three, this is the list of dispersments that occurred in November. A total of $477,000 in dispersments occurred this month. And if you don't have any questions, then I happily present this Treasurers Report to you for approval.
I move we accept the Treasurers Report for audit.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that carries unanimously.
Okay. Moving on to the supplemental report of cash. This report has the same information as the first page of the Treasurers Report, but it groups the information by expected use rather than by fund name. You can see the expected uses are daily operating funds, restricted special needs, and restricted gifts and donations. And of the $11,485,000 available, $1,106,000 is restricted obligations, which leaves $10,379,000 available as spendable cash. And finally, I'll review the items in the capital budgets that had activity this period. You'll see the 2019 capital budget appear next month at the January regular board meeting. So I have it ready to go, and I've presented it attentively to the Capital Projects team that we meet with every month. And so it reflects the budget that the board approved at the last meeting. And we did receive the bond proceeds, so that will be the first item of activity, and then usually we'll have received a couple of the cost of issuance invoices and paid those as well. So you'll see that come in January. In the 2018 capital budget, donations were received for tributes and donations. Expenses were paid towards tributes and the purchase of 103 Grossbach Drive, and also on water quality in Crystal Lake Park. In the 2017 capital budget, expenditures occurred on tributes, construction crew projects, $90 was spent on trees in Crystal Lake Park, and also expenditures occurred on the ITEP Park Street Path project. And finally, there was no activity in the 2016 capital budget this month. There's only two items available left for spending in this budget. There's $197 down at the bottom that will be spent on the James Room here in the next month or so. I'll spend out our contingency.
One chair.
And then, the only remaining item after that is the $500,000 transfer from the General Fund. When we made that transfer, it was in part to help cash flow some larger projects like the ITEP project. And then, as those larger projects are getting completed, and we don't need the cash flow, the intention is to spend those in Crystal Lake Park. And we're preparing to begin spending that money during a spring 2019 construction. So that's when you'll actually start seeing the activity coming out of that line. Typically, I would only present the most three current capital budgets, but because this one still has such a large dollar amount, I'm going to leave it on, so you'll see four reports in the future. I'd like to be able to discuss those expenditures as they occur, and I may wind up itemizing them out like I've done in some of the newer budgets, so you can see what we're really spending $500,000 on. It's a big chunk of the budget. So with that, Andy and Derek may have some updates for you on capital projects.
Could I insert a quick question?
Yes, please.
So with the new accounting system coming along, we'll get one more month of reports in this format, and then we're into a brave new world?
We'll see. I mean, there may be. That's making a lot of assumptions about the project being perfectly on schedule, but the go-live date of the new system is January 22nd, and all of our balances will be converted at that date for the current fiscal year. But I have no idea what the reports are, but no new activity will be input into the AS400 after January 17th. So that's my expectation. Fingers crossed that that all works out the way we want it to. I'm sure, you know, if it doesn't, Carla will help us get the information to the board that the board expects, so, in one way or another. So, but I don't know what those reports will look like yet. So I talked to Andrea a little bit about when they had their conversion, and it was several months of kind of playing with settings to get reports that suited her and also the board, and, you know, so we'll just work with what we get. And they have a lot of reporting capability, so it's actually like almost overwhelming all of the different filters and information that you can check to select or not select or this, that, and the other, and getting it sorted in the way you want it. So I think it's just going to be a learning curve, and I'm excited about it.
I'm sure we can handle a little wobble.
Change, a little change.
Yeah, I would like to think so, at least.
Thank you for your flexibility.
Yeah, I'll jump right in with some updates. Unfortunately, our James Room kitchen remodeling project's about four to six weeks behind schedule at this point. Couple of main reasons is we had a permitting delay.
Oh, right, in the concrete, yeah.
Before construction even began, and then once we got into construction, a plumbing line is actually encased in concrete, a concrete footing underneath the wall that's separating the Carl Room from the kitchen. And so there's some, quite a bit of concrete work that was involved to free up some of that pipe. And then we needed to actually readdress or re-scope the vent line, needed to get moved at a 45-degree angle to get some more space for the slope of it. So there was a rework of the plumbing from our island into the concrete-encased plumbing line that existed underneath the concrete wall footing there, so.
Was it because of the kitchen that the permitting was slow? Because I know that's always a real headache.
It was the electrical portion of the plans that was reviewed by the city that had to go back and get a redesign on it.
Okay.
Wouldn't it necessarily slow, it's just they found something that had to be.
Yeah, sure, you had to go back, right, right, yeah, yeah.
We're anticipating the project to wrap up by February.
Ooh, good.
Which is an important month. That's when recreation's beginning to program the space. So we're monitoring it very closely and working with the contractor to try to see if there's any ways to make up time here. And I'm hopeful that during the normal two-week closure at PRC, we're going to hopefully jump ahead of schedule a little bit and try to make up a little bit of that. On our staff end, I know Janet's been purchasing kitchen equipment quite a bit lately. We're finalizing our tables and chair selection. We'll have that ordered fairly soon, so on that front, we're doing pretty well. One-way study, Crystal Lake Park, we had our public open house on November 28th. It was fairly well-attended. I think all of our staff that was in attendance kept pretty busy talking to neighbors and other interested parties.
Was it primarily neighbors? Do you think, or did you have a sense?
Decent amount of neighbors, yeah.
Good, good.
People that go there often.
Were we talking 10 people, 50 people, something in between?
Probably about 25. Most of our feedback was positive. We got a lot of good comment cards. Few had some apprehension about safety, putting pedestrians and bicyclists on the same road or inviting it at Crystal Lake Park. And I think what we try to stress is that scenario is happening currently with two-way traffic.
Right, yeah.
This is really.
So it's two cars and a bike.
Right. So this is to address that and make it more safe. And I think once we all explain that, it becomes more clear to them as well, and they were pretty supportive. Next steps for that, we'll meet with Fairgram and our staff team in a debrief meeting. Following that, we'll kind of do an expanded staff group meeting to review, primarily bringing in some more recreation staff who program the site or have rentals on the site, and kind of solicit feedback from them as well, and then incorporate those responses back to Fairgram for them to formulate the final plan. Crystal Lake Park Rehab, we had our kickoff meeting last week. That was followed by a site walkthrough. Just want to note that we continually are more and more impressed with this design team and their expertise with shoreline rehab projects. I think we all feel really good right now where we're at and the team that we've put together. Survey work will start next week in Crystal Lake Park. We're compiling information, sending them files, sharing things from the 80s or before that we have to help them with their design process. Our schedule currently has construction beginning the second week of September. And we're working with recreation staff as well to best be able to communicate and plan for our rentals and programs in the park during that two-to-three-month construction Last thing I'll mention is our Grossbach property. We've solicited some proposals for demo for the two structures there. We have asbestos testing currently being conducted. Shortly after the meeting, I'll reach out to PACA and give them an opportunity to have a site walkthrough for any salvageable material, and then we'll jump into demo shortly after.
One thing I want to mention on the one-way road study, you know, we really did it this time because there were some implications with the ITEP path, and where people will be coming along the Park Street entrances. It's probably some time off before we actually convert to a one-way trail system. We're thinking that we would want to first apply for, hopefully, and get ITEP funding to complete the multi-use path up Broadway Avenue connecting the corner of Park and Broadway with the Saline in a crossing there, because then you have a functional multi-use path making use of the road system as a loop path system. And of course, we could use a city sidewalk, but it would be a compressed area and otherwise multi-use wide path. So our current plan is to hopefully apply for ITEP perhaps in the spring. We're hoping it'd be offered this fall, but it hasn't been opened up yet.
So that would be a secondary path besides the sidewalk? No, I'm confused.
It would replace the sidewalk with a multi-use path.
Primary site.
Yeah. Similar to the work we do at the city north of Saline.
Okay.
Also mention that we've already begun making plans for the 2019 Hazard Tree Capital. The work we're doing in removing European black alders, currently one every three or four along through the Wandel Sculpture Walk. Some of those stumps are quite large and taxing for our machines, so we've got a contractor coming in on Friday to begin removing some of those stumps. That works has been going quite smoothly.
It looks good. There are some enormous stumps there.
Yeah, yeah. It's amazing how quickly those alders grow.
Yeah.
Any other questions on the capital stump? That's the one the Executive Director reported.
Let's see, starting out, I think I'd mentioned in board reports previous, but we're, the Park District's working with our new partners, the city, 40 North, in offering a new opportunity in downtown Urbana called the Downtown Art Series. We're starting to peg June, July, and August for three opportunities for extended art experiences in downtown, looking at Fourth Fridays in the evening, somewhere between 5:00 and 8:00, as a way to get, you know, families and activities going in downtown Urbana. So real excited. We're real appreciative of everybody's effort, because it's sort of a new ask. We're not getting necessarily new money or paid to do this, so getting everybody from operational support, get things set up and offered to all the partners coming together. Probably be staff in this room working the events, but we really feel committed to getting some of the activities going in downtown, so it should be fun. We're hoping to grow it so we can get something really exciting. As we know, Champaign has their Downtown Fridays events, Friday Night Live.
Yeah.
So, you know, opportunities, you know, not necessarily to, you know, keep up with that, but really just there's a lot of interest in downtown activities. So we're real pleased that we're coming together on that.
Are they thinking about putting it along Main Street, down along the Boneyard? What's their?
We've got, yeah, ideas along Main Street. I should mention, the August event will really be folded in with Sweet Corn Festival, so it'll be a part of that, but it gives us a presence and an opportunity to, you know, be a part of, a bigger part of that event, and so we're pleased about that. So there'll be more information and updates, but just a reminder, let's see, moving on, really pleased at the work the Urbana Parks Foundation is doing, working with staff. We've had a recent finance meeting. Fundraising continues to move forward. Some exciting events coming up. As you know, I think Thursday night, there's an event at the Lake House for the foundation, so please come out. It's just a holiday gathering, but, you know, something staff's been promoting for a couple of years now is, you know, we need to get regular, ideally quarterly, activities. Some of them should be fun, just get-togethers, and others should be, maybe a little more emphasis on fundraising or, you know, inviting people to talk to. So the one coming up this Thursday is more of a fun holiday, just get-togethers. So if you can think of anybody that would enjoy coming, bring a friend. Should be a fun time. Sculpture update, as you probably noticed, we have a new piece at Lille and working on a new piece coming to Ambox Park, with the idea of getting sort of our, some of our key visible locations looking more interesting. One of the pieces left. looking more interesting. One of the pieces left Meadow Brook Park, and working on three new pieces for 2019 for Meadow Brook Park.
Is the one in Ambucks going to stay where it is now?
The one that just went in?
Right, just right up there along the edge of the road, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I like it, but I was just curious, because you made it sound like it was, it was, it might be going someplace else, okay?
No, no, that just arrived, though, that's the one that is.
Yeah, I mean, it just, it was like a mushroom, it wasn't there when it was.
Right.
Yeah, I didn't, I mean, I didn't see any concrete, I didn't see any preparation, and it's large.
Concrete was done about a week ago.
Ah, see, I must have.
Like a massive crane to get in place, but.
Yeah, that is a huge piece.
It was in Indianapolis prior, right in front of their zoo, so it's been some interesting places.
It's got a great name, I love the name.
It is, it's very fun. Derek and I attended the Public Art League's event last Tuesday, it's always on our study session, in, it's November, so we always go for the beginning part, just to be supportive and always have a lot of good contacts and good conversations there. As already mentioned, UPDAC, we had a great talk, Celeste Choate from the Urbana Free Library came and really talked a lot about the collaborative efforts the Park District and the library are doing. I'd asked her to also talk about, tell us about the library, what's new, and so, obviously, UPDAC, a lot of people are always surprised when they learn all the interesting facts about what Urbana Free Library does and how we work with them, so we're very pleased about that. But it was interesting, my point getting that was, at the end of the meeting, we had some just quick updates, the board or director report, and mentioned about the upcoming sports study that we're hoping to get going with the Office of Recreation and Park Resources, and then, I think there's a lot of interest by UPDAC in that, probably because we haven't really done a focused study in sports, sports psychology, thinking how kids think, what parents should know. So we had a very brief, but lively conversation at the very end of the meeting, I think that'd be a good program, once we get, you know, more information to come back.
Yeah, because there are a lot of sports, there are at least two soccer, three, yeah, right, so.
This whole idea of, you know, where's our market, are we teaching the right values, what should parents be doing, what should the Park District be doing, you know, what's our role in that, and there's new research coming out, so we're trying to pair that together and do this with Champaign Park District. In fact, there could be opportunities for new programming, you know, between the two districts, you know, to reemphasize whatever we learn in this study. Don't know what the outcomes will be, but, you know, from what at least the preliminary discussion's going in, it's pretty interesting stuff, and I think we should take some time and focus on that.
Yeah, I talked to Kyle yesterday, and he said that there is some reduction in kids signing up for sports, and he thought a good amount of it had to do with a lot of traveling teams around, and so, we talked about the perceived wisdom of, you know, putting small kids in on traveling teams, and so, I mean, it's, it will affect us directly as opposed to a broader look at sports, so it's, it'll, I would guess, it will determine the way our recreation development will go.
I would expect that would be helpful to us, and I think we all, quickly, again, it was five or 10 minutes at the end of the UPDAC meeting, but, you know, I think what we already understand, and I think a few UPDAC folks noted is, you know, people will still be interested in that travel team and that high level, and getting their kid, you know, a life scholarship, or, you know, whatever that sort of approach goes, but really, the bigger picture is, look at the value of just general play, body movement, exercise, multi-sport activities, getting people connected, getting physical. You know, there's been some research looking at, you know, the top pro players, many, many of them had much richer, diverse sports backgrounds, and didn't go into the early young age, you know, one sport, one focus, you know, travel team approach, not picking on the travel teams, but, you know, again, that single-stream way of thinking about recreation and sports and athletics. So I think it speaks to our wider offering, and maybe we start to reemphasizing the benefits and the, and do parents know that, they may not know that, you know, information that's out there, so we're hoping to take this opportunity to kind of walk through that, get updated ourselves on what new research, where should we be, and what can we offer back for families and kids, so.
I think the Heisman Trophy winner has, in fact, been drafted by a baseball team, right, and it's maybe not necessary that he's going to play football anymore.
Right, there you go.
You know, he must be a pretty good athlete.
Right, and I think that's the, you know, basic premise, I'm sure we'll learn much more interesting and deep, you know, things, but, you know, there's a benefit in that broad, cross-categorical interest in activity and other, you know, sports and activities.
And there was just, there was just something Fred was just telling me the other day about, they've looked at areas where the, there's the best longevity, and it turns out that the people, the areas where there are the most long-lived people are areas where they're kind of forced to get out and move and do things, to walk, to get groceries, I mean, obviously, that's not going to work here, but, but the idea of keeping moving, keeping going, keeping in action, once you get old, is an important thing, and if you've learned to do things young, and set those habits or set those interests, I think it'll make a huge difference. And since our longevity rates are dropping at the moment.
Well, I think I heard that same report, because I did hear that, and I think one of the stats I heard was, people that kept up active lifestyle, just regular motion, movement, had cardio and, you know, cardio-pulmonary systems equal to, you know, they could be in the mid-70s, but they're more like 40s.
Yep, yep.
So it wouldn't surprise anyone of us in the room that understand the value of exercise and movement, but, boy, that's powerful.
Yeah, if you're 70 and you can feel like 40, that's not bad, yeah.
Exactly, so there's real health benefits and some dollars and cents there.
Yeah, so I think it's good that we're doing this.
Yep. Had a great meeting today, Cork and I, with the Cranet Art Museum, they're very interested in working with the Park District, the Urbana School District, City Arts Commission, and Urbana Free Library on summer programming for kids and families. So, you know, it's always exciting when we see some of our larger institutions that we often think of as serving a different audience, kind of getting the idea that, hey, there's a lot of value. Obviously, summer's a little bit slower time for, you know, their main audience, which is university, you know, staff, students, faculty, people on campus, but we had a very lively discussion, I think it was interesting, the staff from Cranet Art Museum, we were pretty amazed at all the collaborative things we're already doing together, so I think they saw a lot of promise, and we're continuing to meet, staff will meet and probably come up with some program ideas for the upcoming year, for summer.
Are those, is Crystal Wumble, is she still involved in that, and the guy from the?
She's at the performing, Cranet's performing.
Oh, the art museum, ah, oh, okay, sorry.
Easy to confuse.
Yeah, yeah, right, okay.
Because we laughed and joked, they're the ones that are on, in Champaign.
Right.
Because they're on that side of Wright Street, so we had a little bit of laughter over that.
It's also important to note that the Urbana Free Library has hired an outreach coordinator.
Yep.
Oh, really?
So she's been there a month, but it's exciting to see that other agencies are jumping on board with doing more outreach and having it as part of their mission to reach underrepresented, so.
We're just leading the way.
Well, it's exciting and great to see, you know, some energy build-up in that area. Staff continues to work on brainstorming for opportunities at Binkert Grove, staff continues to, you know, look and explore what can be done there. Today was the Urbana Park District Senior Club Holiday Event at the Round Barn, very well-attended, LaShawna and her mother were able to join us.
Oh, yay.
Very nice lunch and great entertainment, and people just love it, they really enjoy that event.
Was it Great Balls of Fire, was it that woman?
Different, different band today.
Oh, not the, not the woman of the, oh, okay.
They seem to have a different entertainment every year.
Yeah, yeah, I love the Great Balls of Fire lady, she's really, she is terrific. Although, that's not quite a Christmasy song, but still.
I think I sent a note out about the plans for the Legislative Breakfast, the UPD is hosting this year, which will be March 11th, I think we're targeting the Phillips Rec Center with all the new improvements there.
That's a great idea.
And it'll be done, right? Well, no pressure.
He'll be in there wielding a paintbrush on the tent.
I'll bring in my hot plate that morning. And then, lastly, had a great meeting last Friday, went over to Bloomington Normal, actually Normal, to meet with folks from the Constitution Trail, and try to basically figure out, you know, my board reports over the last year have continued to talk about the diminishing level of support for trails, what I would call recreational, recreational and fun trails, hiking, walking, biking, as opposed to on-road, you know, systems of riding streets, or that level. You know, DNR is basically shutting down all their greenways programming, their Greenways and Trails Council that I served on will no longer exist, it'll essentially be statewide department heads that'll come together from IDOT and other, what I'd call top management, you know, to decide what policies and, you know, projects that they're going to pursue, so there are really no public access points for the citizenry of Illinois that relates to trails, our organization Trails for Illinois. Also, we went, talked with the people in, you know, IDNR to learn that, we also met with IAPD. Our notion was, with trails, probably now every community's top number one, or at least at the very top of needs, surely, our own parks agency would be, you know, interested in that, and, you know, it didn't go as far as we had hoped, I think we were encouraged, what else can we do, a few small things, one was, could we submit articles to create interest in the upcoming Park and Rec Magazine, so Urbana Park District will be submitted, and we'll have an article in the January, February issue, the Champaign County Forest Reserve wrote one, so we kind of looked at urban trail systems, and I think they're looking at regional or long-distance trails to create some interest, hopefully, they'll be published in that article.
Was that a train track through Bloomington Normal?
Parts, parts of it are, they do have some examples, so one of the things, you know, we want to do is go over there and actually see their system and talk with their trail managers, but it was interesting, because I think what seems to be evolving is, there's really no state-level support, so we're kind of, I'm suggesting, we're moving into a regionalism approach, where everybody is looking in a regional way to improve their own, you know, offerings. So Bloomington Normal is very eager to work with us to get Champaign-Urbana connected, we're hearing the same interest in Danville, you know, with our KRT, working together, pulling staff resources to, you know, get the job done. So it's going to be ever more difficult without supporting staff grants systems in place, but I think we're just, nobody's giving up, I guess that's good news, and so, we have a lot we can learn over there. Bloomington does have a section of shared trail that's open, so we definitely want to learn about that. You know, as we talk about extending our KRT here into downtown Urbana, we know that's an active rail line, and the reality of, could you have a shared side-by-side, we have one example close by, and I didn't know about that one, so I think we're excited to go look and learn. They've also done a terrific job of getting their transportation center and municipal buildings pulled together, help-supported with Tiger Grants that they built. Now, they do have the Amtrak train that stops there, so I'm sure their application, you know, was probably a lot of support for that, but the idea of governments working together, pulling transportation in, where we can make something of it, is the notion, and so, that's a really good example of what they have over there.
Do they see increased or decreased use, or is it saying?
A lot more.
Oh, increased, okay, good.
A lot. No, they're exploring now, they're having more events on the trail, I was surprised, I would have expected them to have lots and lots of events, I mean, they have probably small activities, but not, you know, big area-wide events, so they're starting to talk more about that. The other thing that I really appreciated learning about was, they have a very, very effective Friends Group, and I'm always wary of Friends Group, because sometimes Friends of Park groups are the groups that are out to undo you, like in Chicago, they have Friends of the Parks that are trying to stop the Obama Library from being built there, and, but this is a Friends Group that actually builds trails, maintains, they raise money, you know, every year, they give $8,000 to $10,000, you know, back to the local systems, and they're just, they're doing lots of things, planting trees, doing trail counts, I mean, you name it, there's a wide variety of what I call support services that would really probably be a good model for us to look at, see if we could start, you know, something, or have something evolve on this end over here, so it was very encouraging, you know, a little older system, they've been in place 30 years, so they have, you know, quite a bit of mileage, and, but it's integrated into every aspect of the Bloomington Normal fabric, and I think that's really, really telling of what, you know, we could have in store. It's very accessible, people know about it, you know, they're, they clear it for snow, because it's really a transportation route, they've left, they've changed their hours, or, you know, 24 hours, because they know people transport back and forth to work, and, you know, getting to where they need to go, so, very interesting.
So where does the money come for the plowing, for example?
Each of the, basically, the cities take their portions, and they just divide it up basically jurisdictionally and take care of that. Their Regional Planning Commission is very engaged, you know, they're doing a lot of forefront planning on, you know, future trail stuff, so they're very eager to meet with our regional planning staff and really collaborate in a highly effective way, and the idea of, nobody's coming to fix us, or help us, or make things easier, we're going to have to do it ourself, yeah, and so, I don't know, it was just nice to be in a room full of people that I didn't know before, that were very eager to work with us, you know, they're as excited as we are, so I think next steps, get more of our staff working together and kind of see what we can get, you know, put together on the longer-term, long-front. Some of the communities, I guess that would be, you know, toward our way, I guess, toward the east, Norfolk Southern is pulling rail up, like Mansfield, they've pulled all the rail out of the town, so they essentially have a trail corridor in their town that people are walking and riding their bikes on.
Oh, really?
And so, hopefully, DNR will stay alert and help us, you know, when it becomes ready to be rail-banked, if it can be rail-banked, that would help, then you could establish a lease from there, you could, you know, go down that road of establishing a trail. So it's a very interesting time, and I think it's probably a good idea that we're all working together on this, and hopefully, we'll make some good strides. That's all I had in the report, if there's anything else I can talk about, I'd be happy to.
Thank you, Jim. Moving on to President's Report, just a reminder, we're not going to meet on New Year's Day for a study session.
That's why I was counting on that.
And our next regular board meeting will be the 8th of January, when we get to do our semi-annual executive session minutes, fun and games.
Hope you're going to be there, right?
I will be there.
Oh, good.
That is, I plan to be there.
I hate to do that.
But I don't have anything else to add on that. Moving on to liaison reports, the finance study group has not met since our last meeting, we will be meeting on the 4th of January, if I remember correctly, first Friday in January. Is there anything from the UPD Policy Study Group?
Yes, we met before, we met tonight at 5:30 before the regular board meeting, and discussed policy updates and policy goals for this upcoming year and next year, and reviewed one policy statement regarding records and record-keeping. So, do we have an idea when we will see that come forth?
I think we'll probably include it along with the updates to the personnel policy when we incorporate the nursing mothers and breastfeeding policy as well, so we'll try to group all of the personnel policy updates into the same update, but that one's just drafted and ready, so, so, yeah.
And Urbana Parks Foundation?
We met yesterday. One of the things that we did was re-elect all of the officers that we've had, which doesn't sound really impressive, but if you think about it, you want the same people on hand who got this campaign going to stick with it to the, to the point when it, when it ends, hopefully, in March of 2020, so they have all agreed to serve through that time, if the, if the foundation board is open to that, so that's a good thing. Campaign is coming along fine. They also talked about schedule, Tim also already mentioned the holiday party on February 16th, they're having a pool party for the youth scholarship winners and their families, so.
Oh, what a cool idea.
It is, and what they're talking about is not just having fundraising things, but also raising awareness and, and creating community kinds of, kinds of events. March 14th is the annual dinner, and then, I don't have the exact date for this, but the, the week after graduation, there's going to be a barn bash, and I didn't catch where that...
May 17th, at Hudson Farms?
At Allerton Farms?
Hudson.
Hudson Farms, and the contract's not signed yet, so we can't say who is going to be there, but there's going to be a big, hopefully, a big-name group there, and opportunity, it'll be, it'll be a limited audience in terms of, in terms of the number of, the amount of space, but it's something you want to put on your calendar if you're above a certain age and below a certain age, to qualify, just perfect, I'm not sure I'm not above this certain age, but anyway, those are things that are on their schedule. The other thing that impressed me was when we were talking about priority needs, priority capital needs, they were interested in streamlining that process in a way that would make it easier for staff to come to them with... that process in a way that would make it easier for staff to come to them with, with ideas that might pop up that weren't necessarily on the, on the priority list. So I was impressed with that. Nothing concrete was done, but that was discussed and, and that was it.
All right. Thank you. Anything on the UpD planning study group?
We had a meeting. We did meet. We were all going to meet, but we had a series of disconnects and schedule breakers. But I did meet with Melissa. We had a list. We went over, we'll send out to the committee of recommended programs for the first six months of 2019. So we had a very good discussion, talked about a lot of possibilities. We have a much longer list of potential topics that if we had more time, you know, we would slate them in. But we're assuming we would just keep rolling with that potential list of topics and start filling up, you know, the next several months. So very productive. I think just a note, Melissa will be out for some personal reasons for the January and February meeting. Ellen will see if she can find someone to stand in to cover the, lead the meeting, but she'll be back after that. So.
There are plenty of people there who could.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. But lots of energy, lots of good ideas. For example, just a couple of ideas. We want to start visiting other facilities, move our meetings so that UpD can get out and, you know, see what's going on at the other buildings. And then try to link a few program ideas that might relate to that site. And then we have a, some interesting ideas for maybe a exercise while they're off over the summer that they might get out in the parks and do a park exercise that we have kind of in mind for them. So some fun and interesting things planned. But it's, it's an easy group to work with, the, the whole UpD group, because they're very engaged and very interested in what we're doing. That makes it fun for everybody.
Moving on to old business. We have none since we kept our consent agenda intact. And that then takes us to new business. And the first item is action to approve ordinance 2018-13, abating the levy of property taxes on the Urbana Park District Build America Bonds.
So the items A and B are really the same. There's just one ordinance for each of our large bond issuances. So, but at the time that we purchased these bonds, we made a commitment to our taxpayers to use the rate increase that we received in the referendum to pay these bonds. So if, so our bond ordinance says that, that the county clerk's office will levy that tax. So we have to abate it each year to ask them not to levy that tax because it was our commitment of the taxpayers to use our rate to pay this bond. So that's, that goes back to the whole discussion we had earlier about the transfers from the Recker Museum Fund, the general fund, to the bond fund to pay these payments. So it's these two bonds that we're talking about. We use our rate increase to pay the payments. And so we don't want the county clerk's office to levy that bond fund money. Because if we don't give them notice to abate it, they will levy it. And that would be really bad. I think our taxpayers would be very upset.
We, we would hear about that. Yeah.
I think that those chairs might be occupied.
A little full.
Yeah. Fair enough. Well, I move to approve ordinance 2018-13, abating the levy of property taxes on Urbana Park District General Obligation Park Bonds, alternate revenue source, Series 10, also known as Build America Bonds.
Second.
That's been moved in second. Is there any further discussion or questions? And we should take a roll call vote on this. We'll start at the right this time?
Aye.
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 And that carries unanimously with all five commissioners voting. And then that brings us up to the twin item, action to approve ordinance 2018-14, abating levy of property taxes relative to the, the bonds for the pool.
I move to approve ordinance 2018-14, abating the levy of property taxes on Urbana Park District General Obligation Park Bonds, alternate revenue source, Series 2011A.
Second.
That's been moved in second. Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. We should again do a roll call vote. We'll start on the left this time.
Aye.
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 And that also carries unanimously with all five commissioners voting. That moves us to review and accept the annual priority projects report for the Urbana Parks Foundation.
Each year, the last several years, the staff has put together a report that basically outlines what our, you know, top priorities are, and then other projects that are in our capital listing that would be really good candidates if there was additional funding or another way to get done. I think just a comment I wanted to make, thank you Derek for providing the report, updating it. Ellen usually might have noticed there's usually a financial section, but Ellen was out for family reasons, so we didn't get that part. But basically it's things we see each month that is sort of, you know, pulled together relating to gifts, going through the foundation. One thing I wanted to point out is we now have a joint meeting set for May. And it might be a good idea for us to, you know, I guess staff can always do a report, but I think the key part is that we have more dialogue and discussion on, you know, what are those, those top priorities. And so we did discuss at the foundation meeting. And at first I'm not sure, you know, everyone understood the points I was making. But the, the idea of, you know, we often have flexible needs. For example, at the end of last year, staff had an opportunity through another gift offer to help us get a trailhead facility put into Weaver Park. And so we thought, well, let's ask the foundation if they could help close that gap. And they said, yes, we have unrestricted funds that we could, you know, put to that project. So that's probably a really good example of having a project that might have been listed, maybe it wasn't. But the, the priority of it seemed to elevate, you know, at that end of the year. And so we might want to think about, you know, just have more dialogue of what projects. Certainly if we need a report to get the discussion going, we can always do that. You know, so we have some tracking. But it might be better to think about what goals both of the boards and the trustees would like to see, or what have you heard? Maybe staff could, you know, give you some other inputs on, you know, other than our top strategic priorities, what are other really good projects we might want to think about? You know, one example, you know, we've kicked around is, you know, purchasing a showmobile. Well, that wasn't really on a list necessarily, or it was in a capital list further down. But that might be for an example of a project that could float to the top. Is there any help, any level of support? And so, and again, meeting today with the, some of the fundraising committee, we talked a little more about that. And I think what they're, and Roger said, I think what they're, they truly are interested in knowing what are our needs. And if they change, they would like to know about that. Not saying that they can shift campaign gears and, you know, that sort of more complicated thing. But there might be other ways if there's extra or unrestricted money that could be asked and received, or, you know, partial things even, just to help different initiatives. So again, I think if we had more of those discussions and really decided, you know, what, what are joint priorities or how to establish them, might be some good things to do. We certainly can go through this report. They're all things you've seen. I didn't know if you had questions about it. What I was trying to explain too is it's sort of a clunky way to do it. You know, we prepare it, we share it with you. We might have a conversation and then separately, I would take it to the foundation. They would talk about it. But there's not really a lot of understanding or, you know, whose list is this, or why is it important, that type of thing. So again, I think we have an opportunity for more quality discussion about a few different things or, you know, sharing or ideas or, you know, ways to collaborate to get more things, you know, to happen. So I'm sensing a real strong willingness to do that. But instead for the, you know, this year we have our standard report, which has everything sort of spelled out. But that's not to say some other priority couldn't pop up, you know, toward the end of the year that might not be on this list. And then how do you talk about it? Well, it wasn't on the list. We approved it. We had formal action. You know, not that everyone is so rigid that they couldn't, you know, have a conversation, but it just might be a better, there may be a better tool to get this job done.
I don't think that this format, I agree with you, Tim. I don't think that this speaks to the foundation because they're supposed to be fundraising and they have to sell some, essentially they have to sell a concept or idea to, to an external audience. I also believe that somewhat they have a little bit of blinders on with the campaign, right? Because there's definitely the campaign, but it may not speak to everyone. So how do we have that continued conversation about some things that maybe speak to certain people or how to weave those into the campaign? You know, I'm going to go back to third grade swim lessons.
Good. That's perfect. That's great.
And to me, that kind of fits in with, I mean, it, within the youth, maybe not scholarship, but just, you know, can we have that conversation again? I don't know if Steve wants to go there with me, but.
I'll prime my own pump.
But I mean, I, I, because I, I think that it's about also, we need some high-impact things that the foundation can put their name on, but we can put our name on to raise the visibility and that the community benefits from. I think, you know, a bicycle pedestrian trail is really, everyone can benefit from. But it's not necessar, the visibility is not there. It's not impacting the daily lives of people. And so, so also how we frame, I mean, I mean, for tonight, this is fine. But as we go forward, I think I agree that a different maybe format of having that conversation would be helpful.
Yeah. And something like the, what they're doing at the nature center for the education, for the transport, those three, those three levels of support. Something, if, did you see that? And then, oh, they've got, you know, you can contribute to support for getting Urbana kids to the nature center. You can support in transportation. So they have three levels of, of gifts. And, you know, something, something like that would be, would be terrific. And I think pictures, lots of pictures, a thousand words, right? And I think that, I mean, we're so familiar with this. I mean, all of us in here are so familiar with, with what we're doing. But that doesn't mean that the people on the board, as interested as they are in parks, have any sense at all of the breadth and width of the things that the park district does. And I think that the more pictures, you know, you know, we could have easels around and we can, all, all kinds of things. But I think that
Right.
Part of our job is not just to put together the list, but really to educate them and to have that kind of wish list. I could see a wish list of things and.
Yeah.
A video.
Yeah. I was just going to say, that video that we saw last week for CUSR was really impactful.
That was good, wasn't it?
And I understand the foundation is working on something. I just hope that it's in that, like that was very well done.
Yeah.
And those are, those are things that will sell to the, the public. And at an annual dinner, I could see very helpful. And I think if I understand it too, Roger, you can correct me, that the, the pool party is to connect donors with recipients.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So, so that's, I mean, again, that's sort of like bringing to, it's bringing two different groups of people together. And again, for, you know, to see the impact of your gift. So.
Yeah. Yeah. Telling a story.
Yeah, exactly.
Tell the story of, of what we, what we want and how it's, how it will work is really a really big part.
Because people give with their hearts even more than they give with their heads. I mean, their heads are telling them how much, but their hearts are the ones that are drawn to a, to a, to a program. And, and pictures of people, kids, people with special needs, whatever, are, are going to, are, is going to draw interest.
Yep, I agree.
I think the foundation was encouraging, and it might be staff, to come up with maybe a little exercise or a program to get intermixing when we have our joint meeting. Maybe they would come up with a clever, fun thing to get, you know, people's minds ticking and opened up and.
We don't have, we don't have to sit with our name, nameplates and our microphones.
They mix you up and do some, some fun things, but we'll, we'll give it a stab on that. But I, I think the powerful positive thing is, you know.
Have a pool party.
They're growing pains. I think everyone's, you know, learning, we're growing, we're getting better ideas, becoming more effective. And so we welcome all those opportunities and exercises.
Yeah. Because some will work and some won't, but at least you'll know what didn't and what didn't.
And at the same time, I, I would say this kind of a list gives them some things to ask about.
Of course.
Right. Oh, yeah. We can't do without it.
It'd be hard to show up.
But, yeah, I highly concur with the notion of, of a little more face-to-face interaction and not just, we, we put this in the mail to the other group.
Right. And I think that's sort of maybe where staff see and it's not as effective. You know, in absence of nothing, it works. But maybe there's more heart and soul to put into it. So there's a better understanding of what we're trying to do. And that idea of things may come up. And if they do, staff should feel encouraged to pitch them. So in our small group meeting today, it was definitely encouraged to pitch the ideas that they want to hear. That's what they're here for. And, you know, it's sometimes mixed messages if you're neck deep in a campaign and you have another list of other priority. It's sort of hard to start throwing new thing, you know, so creating more dialogue, I think would be good.
And, and I've kind of noticed that the initial reaction to any new ask is, is to be defensive toward, toward, toward the campaign, which I understand if I had invested as much time as they have.
Right.
But.
It's the yes and approach.
Yes, and.
Which, which we like. So a duality to it. So. And that wasn't to take anything at work away from Derek's update of the report. I didn't mean to.
No, no, no.
Because we need something.
That's the basis of it all. You have to have it. It's.
Well, honestly, the, the changes this year were somewhat modest. Last year we changed it significantly. We, we really focused it on the three tiers of the campaign. And then we kind of created this new category of unfunded projects. This year we added Blair Park because we know we're going to be doing the playground in, in 2020. And so we addition to the, the playground, we'd love to make some other improvements, do a loop path trail and improvements to the pavilion. Obviously, that would be dependent upon some external funding. We have a lot of challenges elsewhere right now. We added the Sculpture Garden Seeding Plaza. So we're working right now with, with Jeff Wondell on, on the council ring. But down where Hickman meets the Sculpture Garden, we have plans for another semicircle seating plaza that would tell the story of the Sculpture Garden. Would be a place where we could recognize donations towards the Sculpture Garden program. That was added this year.
You said seating, not skating.
Seeding.
Seating plaza.
I mean, I, I really liked what we presented at the legislative breakfast and the fact that it, you know, me, it's, it was colorful. It was pretty. But I think it really sort of drove, and so I'll, I think that would be a, though we, I think, we presented it at the annual dinner, that type of communication, if I were a foundation member and I were getting something, a, a list, but in, like, I'm sure you have plans. I'm, part of this is also their ability to visualize, you know, like when we have that conversation. Because we've seen the renderings for things like around Sculpture Park that look really fantastic. But if they don't have that vision in front of them.
Right, yeah.
So I think that that's.
Yeah, the same for Blair, because we, we've talked to a donor about that already. So, yeah, we should, we, we can liven this up quite a bit.
Yeah. We, we thought doing project internally, some project profiles of things that are maybe under wraps. So what, what do we know? What's sort of on the deck and what could be some potential possibilities if they popped up? And so maybe trying to put it in a more graphic format, you know, it burns it in people's head.
It does.
I think it leaves a different impression. Because otherwise you have to read and absorb, probably have some prior knowledge to a report like we do. And that it's helpful to us. But to a group that's a couple of steps removed, it's just all information.
Yeah. If you said, I want to put a trail in behind the South Clinic along the, along the railroad track, people say, oh, yeah, well, that's interesting. But then when you see those, those drawings, you think, oh, wow.
Right.
That would be really cool. And that's.
And I feel like I was at the, I was on the foundation board when we approved the money for the trailhead. And it was, when you could visually see the, the rendering drawings, that made the difference.
Right. And then if we can translate that into getting that across to the donors, we're going to be much more effective.
Yeah.
And then who knows all the other good benefits of somebody, well, I know somebody or, oh, now that you're doing that, that I have a, somebody who might want to help with that.
Yeah.
You know, once you visualize, so.
I'd say that the success we had with the wits on the gateways is because we had a beautiful rendering that really spoke to them.
Right.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
So, you know, I think, you know, moving more toward that. And it, it also educates everybody, you know, what, what are those things? And what are you going to do with them? So they're basic questions. So if somebody is with a donor, they have that much more information. While we can sit in this area and staff can tell interpretive stories or groups can come out and meet or rest and sit and learn about sculpture, that's more than, I'm not really sure why they need it, but they need it. It's important. So I think we can get some traction there. Other points about this report though? Sorry, Derek. I didn't want to cut it off right at the beginning.
Really, the changes were pretty modest. That, that other thing we did is for land acquisition, we focused more broadly around Victory Park. Previously, it targeted Grossbach, and we've had some success there, obviously recently. So there's nothing more to do on Grossbach, but there's still interest in the general vicinity of Victory Park. And then we updated some of the factors for evaluation, include the, the in-process strategic plan that'll be coming out next year. But otherwise, it's, it's pretty much very similar to last year. And if there's not any additional questions, we would suggest forwarding it as is for this year, with the intention of developing something that's more interactive and incorporate some of the, the renderings and pictures that will really speak to donors in the future.
Yeah. I mean, I don't think there's any reason that you can't, I mean, we can't always provide them every year with something like this and just kind of embellish certain certain heights of it. So, right. So it doesn't have to take on a life of its own and really consume tons of your time. But yeah, because I think that those folks are smart enough. They just need a few, few boosts. Otherwise, it's kind of overwhelming.
Would you care to put that in a motion?
Well, I, I think I would. Let me see what it is to say. I suggest, I move that we accept and forward the 2019 Annual Priority Projects Report to the Urbana Parks Foundation.
Second.
That's been moved in second. Is there? That's been moved in second, and is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that carries unanimously. And moves us on to review annual board actions calendar. I, I did have one question, and namely, consider annual project or charge for UPDAC that's listed here in February. And yet, we've also, I mean, with the, the UPDAC calendar is, has gotten sort of
Right, and we have a new element with our planning committee team
Right.
So I wonder if that's something we should revise and
Yes, I think that's right.
So this doesn't quite
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, there are other mentions of, of the UPDAC things later, but I think
Yep.
it could use being revised.
So would you move it up until, what, because we're doing it, it's kind of on a six-month cycle, right?
Right.
So if we did it in May
And quarterly.
So that we, we had it, because there's no meeting in July, so if we, if we
They start in August.
Right.
April starts in August.
Yep, mhm, mhm. So if we talked about it in May, and then we talked about it six months?
Does that work?
Does that make sense? Does that make sense, Lashonda?
Mhm.
Okay.
Move that one to May, and re- reward it.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, Michael. There's just a lot of lines there that's
Sorry, do you want it listed twice, May and November, or?
Yeah, I think so.
Just something to consider before we leave that, I know when we restart in August, that's sort of the kickoff, is at a time, that's a time we could share the charge, I guess, so I guess May works, I guess it does work.
Either May or June, I think.
Yeah, I was thinking, maybe June might even be, however the board would like to do it, doesn't mean we have to back everything up to when it goes, we could do it in May.
There's a lot of things on the agenda for May, so
That's what I was thinking, I was trying to think that's a big annual meeting, if we wanted to think about spreading it out.
When do you know when the new UPDAC chair is, it's only been a year and a half, but I forget.
Usually like May, or so, when we do appointments.
So, it, it would be good to have that person under, have knowledge of that charge in June.
Yep, yep.
Okay, so, suggest relocating it to June.
Okay, and I think still November, because I don't think we want to be fiddling around at that in December, so if we did it in June and November, and it's not quite evenly dispersed.
Oh, I gotcha.
But, still, it's better than doing it in December.
Perfect.
Okay. So we'll see this again with those modifications.
Pardon me?
We'll see this again with some modifications.
Yeah, would you like it to come back next month, or do you approve it with the changes made? However you would like to do it, we could send it back out to you, however you're
I, I think, I think it's best that it go through an editing cycle.
Sure.
Okay, so bring it back in December?
January, to January.
In a year. Any, any other comments or suggestions on that? Okay, then let's move on to accepting of the 2019 Annual Meeting Calendar. And again, with the knowledge that we can amend this through the year, but we do, we are required to post something for the year.
I move to accept the 2019 Annual Meetings Calendar for regular board meetings, study sessions, joint meetings, and UPDAC meetings.
Second.
That's, that's been moved in second, and is there any discussion or questions?
Michael, just one point for the UPDAC calendar, we, Ellen, we had discussion in the office today, November 26th, I think, is probably around that Thanksgiving holiday, so we tend to move that, but we thought it'd be better to ask UPDAC if they would prefer to move it, and not just make that decision.
Yep.
It creates a little bit of work on our end, we have to file some stuff and changes, but that's how we've done it in the past, is usually ask them, so I didn't know if anybody noted that, close to the holiday.
Okay, so we, we did have a motion and a second on this, but we have not voted, so is, is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and I believe that carried unanimously as well. And that takes us to action to approve construction engineering and construction contingency for Park Street Path Project.
Okay, so back in September, the board had approved our construction agreement for the ITEP project. In October, following that meeting, the board approved the construction engineering. In November, the state held their bid opening for the path project, and we actually started to get our finalized numbers for a base construction cost, and that was awarded to start in the amount of $442,509.50. So now that our puzzle pieces are coming together, we wanted to come back to the board and ask to approve contingency, and to assign contingency to both the construction portion in the amount of 15%, that would be $66,376, and then assign a 15% contingency to our construction engineering, which would amount $5,622. I'll note that we have these funds budgeted in our 2017, 18, and 19 capital improvement budget for trails projects. If you remember from probably the last couple months, meetings going over the capital budget, this was assigned to be ITEP overage and/or Crystal Lake Park rehab. Just a quick note on, on schedule, I guess, for the overall project, Fairgram's done an excellent job of keeping on task, we've been very pleased with their work, construction's expected to begin in April, and should be completed sometime in June.
Oh, wow, great.
Just a kind of point of clarification of how this is different, I mean, ordinarily, the board would award a contract after a bid opening, in this case, IDOT lets the, the bid for us, and you all pre-approved
Right.
you know, that contract, providing it isn't too different than the engineer's estimate, this was slightly higher, but not, not overly so, and in fact, given that this is very atypical for an IDOT project, include a lot of landscaping and a retaining wall, we actually felt really good about the bids that they came in as close as they did, so, but at this point, we would recommend that you would assign a contingency, so we have some room to work within our contract if there's some unknowns that come up through the construction process.
And, just so we understand, the, the 17, 18, and 19 trails allocations are, are annual bond money for the most part, right?
Yep.
And, that money would be available for other projects if the contingency is not spammed.
Yep. At that point, we would set it for Crystal Lake Park rehab.
I move that we approve construction engineering contingency in the amount of 15%, which is $5,622, and approve construction contingency in the amount of 15%, which is $66,376 for the Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program for Park Street Shared Youth Path, Use Path Project and Crystal Lake Park.
Second.
That's been moved in second, and is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we should take a roll call vote on this, we'll start at the right.
Aye.
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 Carries unanimously with all five commissioners voting. And then this takes us to action to approve the James Room Remodeling Contingency Increase.
So, as I discussed in the capital project update, we have a, a bit of a delay in the construction currently happening, and we had a plumbing issue once we got into construction. That plumbing issue was change order number three, totaled $5,652. That, with our change order number one, brings our total contingency that we had used at this point, early in the construction, above 50% of what we had signed, assigned initially, which was 10%, $12,200, so, we're coming to the board tonight to prepare for any other unknowns that may happen, and, and, you know, not be another delay on the project, and for us to have funding available, so we're recommending to add another 5% onto that contingency, bringing the total 15% on the construction to $18,300. The net amount that we would have now available with change orders one through three will then become $12,004.
No, that was me, go ahead. I move that we approve increasing the construction contingency amount for the James Room Remodeling Project from 10% to 15% in an amount of $18,300. Second.
That's been moved in second, and are there, is there any further discussion or questions on the point? Hearing none, let's still roll call, right, starting on the left this time?
Aye.
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 And again, that carries unanimously with all five commissioners voting. Next up is action on the Phillips Recreation Center Playground Equipment.
So this is kind of the last link of the chain that I think Tim has mentioned before about flipping a park, flipping a, a facility, and over the past few years, Phillips and the surrounding park space has been the center of that flip, starting with the floor and the Blair Leo Carl Room, the painting of the interior, siding project, new landscaping, and the kitchen that, of course, we're into right now. The next and last item, link of this chain, is the playground replacement, which is the next scheduled replacement on our district's playground replacement schedule, it's about 20 years old. Design, or planning for this has really kind of kicked off in the spring of 2017, when there was a design charrette with Spring Break Day Camp, that continued into the summer of 2017, where we had two sticky dot activities with the preschool arts camp and the regular arts camp at Phillips. And we took the results from those three steady, or planning activities, and we incorporated them into our bid specifications. And we received submittals from our bid from seven different companies, playground companies, within a specified budget of $75,000. We asked for two options, most companies did provide two options with their submittal. And once we received the playground plans, we went to Canaan Academy, which is a private school two blocks away from Phillips, I would say is probably the heaviest user of Phillips Playground, close to it, they're, they're almost daily as weather permits. And I think Kara would, would vouch that, I was expecting the kids to be excited, but it was like Christmas morning, when these kids
Oh, really?
lined up and ushered into our station with all of our playground boards, smiling, gasping, it was almost like we couldn't hold them back to get to, look at the playgrounds.
How cool.
Wanting to talk to us about what they liked, and what they didn't like, and why they liked certain things, so, it was quite an experience, we certainly enjoyed it. And they had a definite favorite from their sticky dot activity. Following the Canaan Academy, we had our normal staff evaluation process, we graded every submittal, compiled the results, and it just so happened that the number one for the staff was also the number one for Canaan Academy, and that's the image that you have provided from Play Illinois included in your board packet.
So is it the, the lower image, not the, not the insert up top?
They're the same thing.
Oh, they're a different view.
Different view.
They're different views of the same thing.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Anything handicap accessible in this?
Yes, and we'll end up meeting with the representative from Play Illinois, hopefully next Friday is what we're shooting for at the moment, but we'll discuss accessibility, accessible items, and that will be taken from an ADA budget.
Oh, good, good thinking.
And then we'll use our $85,000 playground budget that's included in the capital budget for this year, for the remainder of the equipment, surfacing, and any other items related to install.
We actually require in our specifications that they check off that they've met the ADA regulations, as well as ASTM standards on the playground.
Good, good, good. Maybe we could involve Canaan Academy in some sort of, you know, you know, polishing off at the end project, do you think they would?
Like a ribbon-cutting kind of ceremony?
Well, yeah, or, or, you know, was it King Park? Yeah, putting chips down, I mean, because they had a big part in it, I would think that would be really meaningful to the kids, because, you know, we helped, we helped the park district design it.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, yeah.
I remember our last playground at Larson Park, we had the kids there, and it was hard to keep, it was, it happened to be Arbor Day, and it was hard to
Yeah, right.
Focused on the trees with the playground.
Get off that swing, kid.
They love the trees, usually.
I move to award the Phillips Recreation Center Playground Equipment Bid for Design Number Two in the amount of $74,732, and assign a 15% contingency of $11,210.
Second.
That's been moved in second, and then, any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, we should take a roll call vote, and I'm, I think we'll start at the right this time.
Aye.
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 And that, again, carries unanimously with all five commissioners voting. And we're last, ready to re, oh
Yep.
Kara's at the table, fine, except for reviewing our ADA transition plans.
So, once per year, I come back and just present to you all about what we've done and what we've learned, and what we're looking towards regarding the ADA transition plan next year. And I'd just like to reiterate, as I do most years, that we continue to learn about the standards, and make better decisions with the projects that we're involved in now, so that future, when we eventually do another one of these plans, hopefully there's less, so we have a better understanding at that time. We are up to 42% of all barriers that were called out, there were 745 barriers in all of our parks and facilities to be addressed, and actually, since writing this memo, I worked with Shane, and he actually just went through the plan and noted a few other things that we sort of checked off over the years, maybe without even knowing. So, I bet we're at closer to 43% of all barriers, which is kind of amazing that we're getting towards the 50% mark. As I've told you in the past, there's four priority levels, priority level one is sort of simple, or low-cost, or done easily, all the way up to priority four, which involves often like a reconstruction of a facility, or a large amount of money. And something exciting is that with the James Room and Kitchen remodel, we are actually addressing some of those priority three and four things, knocking those off the list. So, that is actually sort of a bigger thing than if we were to do a bunch of level ones, because of the sort of resources that it takes. A few other things I noted was every year, once per month, the playground safety surfacing is refilled and re-leveled and made to be accessible at all times, picnic tables are sort of redistributed, the ADA picnic tables are the ones that sort of have the extra area where someone could, in a wheelchair, or any sort of other mobility device, actually roll up to picnic with friends and family. And then, lastly, we have some grounds-related things, such as making sure brush and limbs are away from sidewalks and things like that, so those are just ongoing each year. And then also, there were a few things done at the nature center, and the lake house, or will be done this winter, just smaller things, like the way that paper towel dispensers are in restrooms, or toilet paper dispensers, things like that, that we may not have known about previously, and are just updating now. And then lastly, I talked a little bit about And then lastly, I talked a little bit about looking to the future in my memo, and at NRPA, I went to a nice session with someone who is going to be a new resource for us when we have questions because ADA and in parks is different than some other areas when you're only working in a building and you don't have some of the natural environment to deal with. And so, I already reached out to this woman, she's actually from Illinois, and asked her how we would make the rock outcroppings at Crystal Lake accessible because they seem kind of inherently just large stone steps and not accessible. And she sent along some pictures and some plans and ways in which maybe not all of them, but a portion of them can be made accessible. And essentially, you need to offer people the same experience, just in a little bit different way. So, as long as we are able to provide a concrete or a crushed stone path down to the water's edge, then we're still providing that experience. And I think that we can do it in a really tasteful way, using the same materials. So, that's an example of something that other consultants may not have dealt with or have as much experience with.
So, this analogous to the picnic tables where only 20 percent actually have the adaptations, you have to provide the experience, you just don't have to provide it every place.
And one thing she did also note is that I mentioned wanting to have an outcropping sort of close to a parking area. And she said, "That's important that people can get there, but also, it's so commonly done that you put the accessible thing right by the noisy parking lot where all the people are, isn't the good place for fishing and maybe not actually be where people want to access the amenities." So, I think that it's good for us to balance the proximity of the amenities with also, is this actually where people want to be or is it just convenient for us to put it there?
So, will some of these things that you've learned be factored into ERA's work on the Crystal Lake project?
Yeah, absolutely. And they have some experience doing similar things, too. So, they'll bring some knowledge and then we'll show them what we've learned. And also during the presentation at NRPA, the consultant mentioned that most often the barriers that people cite to actually making things accessible are just attitude or cultural barriers, saying that like, "We don't have money to do that," or "We can't do that." It's taking funds away from more important things. But I don't think that's an issue here at the Park District. Clearly, with reaching 50 percent of our barriers, it's something that's become more ingrained in what we do. And some of our barriers stem from the priority four things that take a lot of money in reconstruction of buildings. But also, another barrier is some interpretations of the ADA standards aren't that clear and we have to get more information. For example, we've gotten called out for not having trash cans along accessible routes, but it's like, to us, they are right there. But we need to look more closely at sort of the measurements and the reach range and things like that. So, just continue to get more information. And then also with Shane, we made a list of 2019 projects. And so, you'll see them happening at a variety of locations next year. And the lake house and the cottage will have more than one. If you remember in past years, one thing that's been done facility by facility is replacing the exterior and interior door closers because there's a closing speed and a pounds of force requirement for opening doors. And even though it's not necessarily the most glamorous project, it really does make an impact for everyone trying to open and close doors. And so, the cottage will be the next place to receive those upgrades.
I would just like to say that I think that ADA is really important, but I think one of the things that we often overlook is that it makes life easier, not just for people with limited mobility. You know, there are lots of, there are lots of hidden disabilities. I came in tonight with my arms full, didn't have a hand, and that's, those are heavy doors. It was really nice just to be able to lean on that, lean on that thing and have the door click and just open up. So, I think that it's, it's a broader good for the community. It reaches more, you don't need it all the time, but when you need it, it's there. And I think that that's, that's something that we need to keep in mind as well, that this isn't, this is a much broader scope than just reaching a small, a small group.
Yeah, I hope we continue to employ that sort of universal design that you're talking about.
Mm-hmm.
Just wanted to compliment Kara and all her great work. She's really done a great job in embracing the ADA. You know, when ADA started, I think, you know, all of us kind of get handed a set of new rules and nobody really questioned it. You just kind of did it, whatever. Over time and evolution, more ideas, more questioning, really more complicated situations have arisen. And so, I think looking at it deep, getting more information, having a staff person, you know, dedicated as part of their work to really make things better. And I think that comment Kara made last about universal design is really kind of a better place to be. ADA is important and will continue to do that, but that idea of are we thinking first is easy access for everybody? And that really fits into our age-friendly, you know, future where people don't necessarily need any special accommodation, they just need something their elbow can tap the door with.
That's right.
So, making life easier and things we use every day, you know, a little more close at hand and foot to us. So, I think we're on the right track. Just wanted to also mention, you know, we've made changes at CU Special Rec. We don't have a manager that sort of oversees. In the past, that manager was tapped sort of as our shared district coordinator or expert. I think both districts have agreed, we're going to go our separate ways and manage things in-house. So, Champaign will take care of their things, they'll work with their planning, their operations staff will work with our planning and operations staff. I think the reality was, we probably knew a little more than they did. They probably had more programming things where they could accommodate and adapt, you know, for people at a program or an activity. But the physical, how do you construct something?
Right.
You know, it's probably better suited in the areas of people that do project management, planning, and construction. So, we're okay with that and support that. Just wanted to mention.
I mean, realistically, we've been doing that for several years. It's, I've been talking with Kara whenever we have a question about something that we want to get more information on. Kara's done the research. I think it dates back to Don Schaefer when we might have actually asked a question if someone over at CU Special Rec. So, that's, that transition took place a long time ago. Now, we're just going to formalize it.
And so, next year, when we appoint people, we won't see somebody in Special Rec. We'll probably have Kara as our own person, you know, identified.
Yeah, good idea. Yep, yep.
Other questions about ADA or related to access or?
You don't, and you don't know how good it is until you travel and you find places where ADA is just, it hasn't crossed the consciousness of the country and you think, "Oh, well, mm."
Right.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're doing a really good job, and I think Park District is doing a particularly good job. And we, we're just kind of scratching things off that list and just going along and not letting it, not letting it sit.
And hopefully not adding too many things to the list.
That's not us, somebody else's job. Just our job.
We don't have any new business removed from the consent agenda, so that brings us to comments from commissioners.
Do we know how our relationship with the school district is going to affect splash programs or any other potential future meetings going forward?
You know, my assumption on that is, you know, at the staff levels, we'll probably continue doing everything, you know, we have done. So, there's a change to that. But, you know, as far as maybe bigger, yeah, I think there's a lot of questions.
Yeah, they probably have more things to deal with than.
You know, I think we faced one today, you know, we had our meeting and Dr. Williams joined us and, you know, he's, will be there and, you know, it's sort of a limited, looks like a limited window of time. But, well, I guess we'll have to wait and see how things transition.
I'll see.
I guess.
Staff is concerned.
Short term, like today, we were happy to see Dr. Williams there, so, I mean, that was a good thing.
So, he started. I'd like to say that I like the idea of eccentric reducers. It seems to me like something that fits our banner really well. Although, I don't know that, I mean, it's a lot of work to do to reduce all our eccentric people. And then, Corky, you had a question about, I got a, did I get an email about the cancellation of water, the evening water aerobics? Are we short staff? Is that the?
I think we had an instructor issue, yes.
Yeah, okay.
The holidays are coming up. It goes through December, is that correct?
I, I don't know. I don't, but I.
I seen the notice go out.
Oh, okay.
I heard a little bit before the notice that we were having an instructor issue.
Yeah, is there, is there a way to train, I mean, to set up some sort of program to train people? I mean, because the noon time one that I've gone to mostly is, you know, it's just a, one of the participants essentially took over the class. And in fact, I think that happened this summer as well. So, obviously, there's a shortage of folks to do those.
For water aerobics, there's a shortage. I can report more after I talk with LC on specifics about it.
Okay.
But I was meeting to meeting today when I seen the notice that it actually got canceled, so.
Yeah, I was surprised. Although, do you.
99% sure it's an instructor issue. And I do know, over the years, it's even when we got a participant to step in, which was almost last minute that she came through for us when one of our instructors moved out of state, which had been here for a long time.
Right. And do you, how are we doing for numbers in terms of participants? That's not, it's not enough of a decline in that class that it's not a big loss or?
Well, anytime you lose a program, it's not good.
Right, but if you only had three people in it, then it's not like you got.
Well, flexi passes are, it's hard to tell.
Of course, yes, I'd forgotten. That's right.
Because there's flexi passes.
Right, right.
So, registration for any of them are probably only four or five, but then you get all the flexi passes that come in.
Okay, I didn't realize it was that much of a disparity.
Flexi passes are huge for water aerobics.
Wow. Well, it makes sense.
Yeah, but I'll check with LC.
Okay, just send me an email if you want. I was just curious. Thanks.
Derek, I just wanted to give kudos to the, to the guys who've been working on the tree removal in the Sculpture Garden. That's a lot of work. They've had to move a lot of stuff, and the sidewalks have been really well-kept and cleaned up and everything through that time. So, please convey to them that those of us who walk particularly early would really appreciate their work.
Thank you for your words, Roger. Yeah, we're actually going to bring a room sweep out tomorrow to get a little more of the residue that, you know, invariably, when you have a project of that scale and size, you have a little bit of mess to clean up. But they've worked very carefully and it's been productive. I guess I should mention, you know, for the folks at home who might not be familiar with what Roger's referencing, we are working on a project on the Wondell Sculpture Garden. There's information on the website. Also, I'd smile politely about the project and through the generosity of the Wondell family, we're planting hundreds of new trees out at Meadowbrook Park along the Wondell Sculpture Garden.
Was that a plural, hundreds?
Hundreds, yeah. It's over 236, if I remember correctly, new trees.
It's a lot of holes to dig.
And now, now we're moving forward with thinning some of the trees that are either problematic because they're invasive character or some that are problematic for management with prescribed fire. But we'll still maintain the forested character of that area. So, we'll have shade. It's going to be a gradual transition while our new trees grow up.
So, you're working on both sides of the path then?
We are.
I had a Tom's Mailbag question about the same, so you'll probably see it in Saturday's paper.
Oh, yeah? Boy, you're as popular as that road guy.
Because the, you know, the work is fairly, I mean, I guess, maybe because we understand what we're trying to do there, but people really notice things.
They don't like trees cut down.
Right. That, you know.
That's, that's the good news.
It is. Yeah, right. We planted, what, probably about 270 trees in that area to begin with. So, the fact that we're trying to upgrade and improve that is, you know, it's a pretty significant effort to get it in a better place. So, hopefully with some time and effort, it'll, it'll transition. But shade is an important thing, we understand, when people walk. We also should add, too, remember the primary, primary system at Meadowbrook is a prairie system. It's not a forested woodland, you know, where shade is abundant. So, there are pockets of shade, so we are encouraging people to, you know, maybe think about when they walk there, when the shadows are more, you know, if shade is really important. But to assume we could create bucey woods there, that's really not the plan, you know, to create, you know, that kind of atmosphere.
Right, right.
259 trees and shrubs planted.
Wow. That's a lot already or going, I mean, in the total scheme of things.
We've got through the final phase, so, yeah, we're not quite at that number yet. But our final phase is coming here. Four phases total.
My goodness.
Crystal Lake Park has a lot of shade, so it's another good walking place.
Yes. That's right.
Any other commissioner comments? Seeing no indication of that, then I think we've exhausted our agenda. I'll declare adjourned.